I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for former police officer Leonard Howard, who passed away? Thank you. Thank you. Amen. And I get a roll call?
Dominic Jr.?
Here.
Lisa Chauvin?
Here.
Dominic Roberto?
Here.
Jay Drewlin?
Here.
Deborah Hortos?
Here.
Bill Quinlan?
Here.
George Thaw?
Here.
Mayor Margaret Steed?
Here.
All right, sounds good. Executive session was held this evening at 5:15 to discuss some legal matters and personnel matters. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th Borough Council meeting?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizen comment?
Sorry about that.
I can see in that head nod, so.
Just one, anything?
Yeah. All right, Donna, step up to the plate.
All right. Okay, good.
We can hear.
All right, so as most of you know, I'm Donna Gia. We run Seventh Street Year in pit care, and myself and Ron Kuster and Mrs. Markdo are here this evening representing the schoolhouse up on Sixth Street, the old Borough building. And we have completed Phase One of our project, where the outside's done, the roof, the windows, the pavement, the first floor entryway, and the stairwell up to the second floor. Phase One is complete, and we are moving forward into Phase Two, which is working on at least one schoolroom at a time, one classroom at a time. There's eight classrooms in the building that we're trying to get, you know, fixed up. Some of the things that we're looking to do are having a liberal library work with us and put some services here in pit care, so people can use the building for that. You know, we've talked about possibly having like a room that people can have meetings or parties or things like that. So we're pretty open to what we're going to do, but it's definitely our mission to have community use of this building, definitely. So if there's anything that council or if you know of any avenues that we could go on or for more funding, we have been doing a fundraising campaign, getting things out to people, and it has helped, but obviously it takes a lot of money for an old building like this. So if anybody has any ideas or if Borough knows of any way that we can, we can try to look for more funding, that would be great. We are also unveiling on September 20th, which I have a little flyer for everybody, we're having a block party, and we are unveiling the first phase of the memorial brick or the via brick program. Not everybody on the brick is deaf, I can't say that. But it's the via brick program that we've had a lot of past pit care members that have bought bricks in, in memory of somebody, in recognition of somebody, and the first patio of bricks is going to be unveiled Saturday the 20th. We are doing a second campaign because we've had a lot of interest in bricks. So it's a nice way to, you know, recognize people before, people forward, whatever. So, yeah, anything else that I'm missing?
The building has historical society recognition.
Oh, yes. Yes, we did get Pennsylvania Historic Recognition for the building, which is really exciting. Yes, that's awesome. That is really, you know, that's a great thing. So there are some things with that that, you know, they've come in and looked at, they work with us, and as you know, Eric Seibel is our contractor, and he's doing a phenomenal job. So if you haven't seen it yet, please come up, especially on the 20th. It starts at noon, we're going to have three bands. We have Reckless Ray, Phil Craxton, pit care guy, and Mike Philosophy are going to be playing. We have some food vendors, we have local organizations and businesses that are setting up some tables, you know, just to have a fun community day and get everybody there. The building will be open, so you can go in and check it out and see what we've done so far, but, you know, we'd love for you to join us.
Is Summersville working?
I believe, yes, and we did that last year.
We did that, actually. Okay.
And so ahead of time, I know there's going to be a vote, but thank you for letting us close the lockdown and do this.
I'm going to, do you mind if I forward this to like Brandon Markozik and Nick Biscatano?
Oh, Brandon will be there.
Oh, he'll be there? Nick, did you, Nick Biscatano, the other, Jim Brewster's little spot?
Jim Brewster, we emailed, I don't know what, please, go free.
Yeah, I'll forward it to him as well, and then Michelle Chapman from the county.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Just so that they, I mean.
Oh, I'm fascinated too.
Yeah. For funding purposes.
Because they might be able, I was just going to say, they might be able to tell us where to go and get.
They did apply, or we did. Put in for a state grant with Brandon, we just haven't heard back from that. So, yeah, definitely.
On the historical side, with it being deemed that, can you not apply for certain grants through the?
We did get one grant because of that. It was a $25,000.
It's $25,000.
Matching grant.
It was a matching grant.
Right.
We need to get you a no match.
Right. Hey, we'll take it, yes. So thank you all, and please join us.
Now, is that big round wash tub still down in the basement that we have to step on? It's gone?
No, it's gone. The basement's still, you know, looking pretty fine, but, yeah, it would be a great speakeasy.
There you go. Are you guys, Donna, are you guys a nonprofit, like 501(c)(3)?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Awesome.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, nobody else for citizen's comment, so we will move on to the mayor. Betsy?
Okay, the pit caring police in the month of August were 308 complaints. We collected $200 in our fines, that's a lot of parking tickets, estate 187, the woman magistrate 75, our magistrate 701, county fines 177, and no quality of life fines. I just want to remind people that are listening, passing the school bus can cost you a lot of money, a lot in a lot of ways, but we still have people passing it. I just like to put that reminder out there. The other thing, whatever reason, tires and TVs are showing up around town, so I urge anybody, when you buy a new TV, figure out how, before you buy one, how you're going to get rid of the old one. You did get rid of them in the spring, so you can hang on to it. Refrigerators are about the same thing, you buy them, you wouldn't have them, take the old one. And tires, of course, continue to show up, sometimes a few, sometimes singly, but get rid of them when you buy a tire. I know it costs you, but, you know, you're going to eat them for a while. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Dominic?
I have no business.
Thank you. Streets, George?
Yes, thank you. Discussion of Ravine Street Catch Basin, a motion to accept the phone bid of Vezelley Walling for the Catch Basin and the Great.
All right, we'll start with a discussion. Do you have some details on that, Don or Mike?
I, I do, so the top of Ravine, if you come off of Wall Avenue, there's, there's a stream that basically feeds down, mostly it's runoff stream, and there's a, there's a, it's like a giant grape that's made of ivies. It's about six foot high, I don't know how wide it is, but it sits there to catch any of the rain that falls down. It, it's in, it's in really bad shape, so Jim got quotes from Begley and from Multi Motors in Greensburg. Multi Motors was around $16,000, because we have to go pick it up or make arrangements to deliver it. Begley's was thirteen value flat hundred, and able to deliver it to the site. This thing is also dipped and galvanized before, after it's welded, so it won't, it won't rust. They have, the Public Works has a plan to kind of dig out the, the bottom area, we have an incentive pension fund to place this thing, put this in place, fill the walls with brick wrapped large stone, they can catch the other debris, and a smaller brick down the road for the. Every time we got a heavy rain this year, everything just washed down on the ravine, and the guys were out there for a day just cleaning it up. Plus, and that doesn't include what happened to some of the houses, so this is something that they need to get done.
That was up on that back by coal, down at the bottom of Summersville. Is that the one that you're referring to?
No, it's off of Ravine Street.
Yeah, it's off of Ravine.
Up I U.
Yeah, yeah, but coal goes, and it goes straight back.
Well, so they're, they're, they parallel them.
Back by Green.
Ravine's the first one after School Street on the right. You go up that.
That's at the end of the road.
Is that my?
There's two of them. There's two of them. There's one on coal, and there's one on.
Okay, I'm thinking of one of coal next to the bottom.
Yeah, the one on coal's already in good shape, they have that already taken care of. The one on Ravine, you basically want to do the same thing there.
Okay.
I, I have used Ravine way of building, and they're good.
They're very good, like I said, that's, that's, they're going to deliver it to us for that price.
And Begley's very, very good.
They're the only two that responded, and I don't believe the third one was the Jim Cole.
You, you want to make that a form of motion, George, still?
Yes, I'd make that a motion to go with Begley for $14,000 on the Catch Basin and Great up on Ravine Street.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any other questions on the project? Or, yeah, go ahead.
How much is the bid?
$13,000 some change.
$13,500. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion of Britain Avenue project and expanding the scope of pay.
So when we had the onsite meeting with the contractor, they're basically going to go rebuild and pay the intersection of Britain and 11th Street. We've been getting some complaints about the top of Britain, where the road is just crumbling, the, you can pick up the pavement and squeeze it in your hands. So I contacted Dan Popovich and asked him if it was possible to expand what Flamino was willing to do, what we're going to do in the contract, because the contract did came in at $74,000. Total rent's $100,000, so we have, we have some money there, and he gave us some estimates, which I, I put out there, everybody. I think it's, if Flamino's willing to do the extra work at the bid price, I think it's kind of a no brainer, because it's just the rest of the estate money that we're getting.
Yeah. Use what we, use what we get, I'd say.
So we would just give a motion to direct Eads to contact Flamino and expand that payment.
It's not going to exceed the $100,000?
It might go a little over. I think that the, the one scenario was 24, a little over $24,000, but that was a little more extensive work.
Did you get assistance in moving it?
Yeah.
Kind of want to see what the contractor, whatever. Make a motion to expand the scope of work on Britain Avenue?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, discussion of projects to be submitted for possible CDBG funding for 2025 or '26?
Be 2026.
2026. Oh, these are the projects, really, okay. Project one, reconstruct Thomas Alley from Center Avenue to Hillside Avenue. Highland Avenue, sorry. Work would include removal of the brick road surface, evacuation, install new sub base, and any necessary drainage improvements, installation of asphalt base, and wear reinforced. I'll do them all?
Yep.
Okay. Reconstruct improvement alley on Thomas Alley, from Thomas Alley to Highland Avenue. Work would include removal of the brick road surface, excavation of the, install new sub base, and any necessary drainage improvements, installation of asphalt base, and wear reinforced. Project three, reconstruct wall avenue between, I'm sorry, reconstruct the wall between Thomas Alley and Brut Valley, reconstruct wall to support roadway.
So this, so this project three, the corner of the alley, the little, I don't know what you want to call it, little triangle, grass patch off of Brut Valley. So it's a, it's a little alley that runs from Fifth Street down to, kind of down to Third to Britain. The corner at 368 Third, that wall is collapsing, and that wall supports our, supports our alley, so that's what that.
Tell me again.
Yeah. And this, this improvement alley is just, it's a little over a lot long, it's between the, to the left of the church, it just runs up, but that, all these alleys are collapsed there. And the first one from Center to Highland, when we owned the building where the AIU is, for a head start, we had to dig up the alley for the, for the sewer, and it's never been properly reconstructed, so a lot of complaints on that alley as well.
That, that's Thomas Alley?
That's Thomas Alley.
Thomas Alley.
So it's important.
Here's, here's the one thing that I just keep thinking about, is when you asphalt paint something, being that that is all healed, the water already runs down, and the bricks have some lines between them that it can be absorbed into the ground, and then if we end up paving it, that's going to be more water for the people at the bottom, and I know our church has received water from that alley when it gushes down back behind it. Is there another solution to just?
We could help drain it certainly. When, when, when we're doing project, every paving project, our goal is not to increase any sort of drainage.
Water flow, and everything runs downhill.
But then you're going to fix existing drainage unless you do a drainage project, which we could certainly look at it and see if we have a recommendation.
I would assume project one is probably the most priced.
We're going to, we're going to put, we're going to put three, you know, we're going to put grant applications in, you know, so we did contact the cog, and they said all three projects are, are valid projects. I will say, we'll probably get to need household surveys on this, because the, the funding source, CDBG, has to be low income.
Yeah.
A certain percentage of low income surveys, so we'll have to do, conduct the surveys. There's just three applications at this point.
Okay. So basically we just throw all three in?
We'll put applications in for all three, and we'll, we'll have cost estimates along with the.
I just want to make sure we didn't have to pick one of these to apply for, we're putting them all in.
Our thoughts were to put all three, since all, since all three have been done, and the, the projects are there, and, you know, you get funding for one this year, maybe you might get the other one the following year, then this way you start to develop in that backlog of, of projects you want to do with this funding source.
So just necessary drainage is the only option other than?
Well, we're not, I think when you're asking, is we're not going to be able to put material down there that's going to eliminate the drainage. We'll have, we'll have to figure out doing stuff, you know, if this occurs, could we even put another inlet there, you know, if it's something like that?
That would be locked in some time.
George, you have a motion to submit those grant, that grant, those grant applications?
Yes, I make a motion to put aside drainage, to call grant for 2026.
Second.
All right, motion made, seconded, any more questions on the projects? Or the grant? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, next up, Parks and Rec, Lisa.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the park building rental fee for the Assembly of God Church to provide a Thanksgiving dinner on November 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I also have a couple other things. I wanted to announce that the Halloween parade will be starting at Assembly of God Church, come down Center Avenue, as we did last year, to the fire department, where we are, I'm actually putting together a group right now. We may do a trunk or treat instead of going inside of the fire department, but I did check with Vic, and the fire department is available, so we'll see, but that's October 25th. The Old Fashioned Christmas is scheduled for December 13th. And the other thing I wanted to announce, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Go back to Halloween. If anybody is interested in joining the group, I have interest from a resident that might email me about, that is interested in doing the trunk or treat, and I also, the tattoo shop, Justin, has reached out to me, and he wants to be involved in the Halloween some fashion this year. So we're going to try to make Halloween a little bit bigger than it normally is. I'm hoping that we can get a couple volunteers on board to put that together. Okay. Yeah. As Park and Rec, I would like to hold a non-perishable food collection that will coincide with the fresh market that Alliance Club is holding. So we're going to put boxes out in a few different locations. I'm going to reach out to some of the churches, as well as the different organizations in town, to see if they could maybe give us a hand in this, as well as possibly hold a collection the day of the Halloween parade also. So if anybody has any ideas on that, please get in contact with me also, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance and economic development, Bill?
Motion to pay the bills is presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to advertise the 2025 budget meeting suggested date, Monday, October 13th or Monday, November 10th, to be followed by a regular council meeting, final budget meeting Monday, the 17th or the 24th. Budget to be advertised for adoption on December 8th at 16.
Second.
Second.
Well, which dates?
The, the 13th and the 10th are the grand meeting dates. We can have the budget meeting either at 5:00 or 5:30, that's, that's, we don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Does 5:30, you have enough time to go over it. If we, we need to have an executive, we can hold it afterwards?
Yes.
And then we do want to do the 17th or 24th?
24th is the Monday, the 4th, thanks to, I believe, I just wanted to throw both options out for 2017.
17th?
17th.
All right, so the motion would be, Bill, if I'm correct, it would be the October 13th, which is before the council meeting, November 10th, which is before the council meeting, and then November 17th, I guess, just 5:30, same time as the others. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt resolution 10, 2025, approving of the 2025 MMO as calculated by the actual $58,504 for the police pension and a $41,929 for the non-uniform pension.
Target.
Motion made, seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bill, health and welfare, Deb?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Nick has submitted his monthly reports to council. We, he wrote out a lot of citations, or several, and 20, but out of them, only nine black lines. A lot of times these people, which people don't realize, by the time it gets to the magistrate, because they're given a certain amount of time, they wait to the last minute, and then they clean it up, and then the magistrate dismisses it. So Nick's writing his citations, and people are just playing around and pushing it.
Are they, are they cleaning it up before?
Before the hearing, yes. But, but he's writing, he's writing.
They have, they have X amount of days.
Yes.
Why don't we take pictures and?
We have.
We have, and?
We have. He has, I'm not allowed.
And goals not to collect money, it's to get them to clean up their property, so that's what they're doing, that's what we want them to do.
And they time it so that it's like done towards the end of summer, and then it does in winter. They just hold out on it. It's a shame, because he is out there writing tickets. I'm a pain in the butt, he's writing them. Thank you. All right, the second thing is that's on the table, oh, first, I just wanted, regarding the televisions and refrigerators, anybody watching YouTube of this meeting, if you don't have Facebook, there is a man, his last name is McPartland, and his phone number If you call this man, he will come schedule and pick up your refrigerator, your stove, your television. You just need to reach out to him. If you look on the Facebook page, if you were there, I have it up under the featured, underneath the big picture, his name and number. So hopefully some people and landlords will utilize that. The last concerning issue, I want to discuss the Center Avenue, Center Avenue and Third Street source. I was told, Dawn, that you were given information about the cammering and what possibly these residents can do, it's just not one. It's one, and then one on each side that keep getting water.
Yes, that's what we did, and we went up and logged and went through, went through the cameras. The sewers aren't in good condition, as everybody could probably well imagine, they're pretty old. So our recommendation would be replace both sewers, I mean, there's a cost, so I submitted a cost estimate to Mike, but we don't know how much it would cost to replace the sewer on Third, and how much it would cost to replace the sewer on Seventh.
Okay, from my understanding, when they were camera, and camera, we brought in, we were the, the better cameras, that they're not in good condition, but they were, are clear, it's just the amount of rain that came that period of time that?
In that area, it appears as though they're clear. They're all broken up. But we, we can't see above it to see how much water is coming down to the sewer. So I, I think, you know, I wasn't around when, when the flooding happened, but I think what happened was it was during one of the higher ranges.
Yes.
And it sounds to me like there, there's enough infiltration getting to the lines, but the lines have been over, overused, and then there's no room for, for to cut down. So part of us replacing the line would be upsizing the line.
Okay. So there was an estimate submitted?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any input or questions, something to mention, or?
Yeah. When are they going to do I find Catholic Church, it's getting worse.
Oh, yeah, the patchwork that they did, the water company came in this morning, they were gone within 10 minutes, and it's just, it's sinking already.
Yeah, I was going to say, you want to save that for the engineer's report? We're under Deb's category right now, we can save that for the engineer's report.
We already put streets under me and on health and welfare, so why?
Sewer, sewer, on street. So do you have anything else under health and welfare?
Yeah, I do. I just want to say that June 25th, I was pumped out by, as were my neighbors, they weren't able to get the castor genere, they lost their, I can't speak for them, they lost a lot. My neighbor was pumped out. Since then, I've been, I've been flooded five times, and it's sewer water, and it's not sanitary, it's where it's mud. And right now, I, I don't want to bring my furniture in, because where am I going to take it? You know, we're, again, we're just love and this, we're, you know. So I lost a pump tonight, which was around 500 bucks to my furnace, but I just want to mention, we've all, we've all been flooded, and we're all in, just love, and we're right there at the sewer.
All right, thank you. Moving on, electric, myself. Just a quick thing, we, me, Dom, and Mike went to the PMEA conference this week, this past week. We got some good information. Borough Council has an updated rate comparison table to see where we stand as far as our rate goes compared to just the locals or the other towns that have their own electric. Just in comparison, to give you a heads up, we are significantly. Uh, just in comparison, to give you a heads up, we are significantly lower than Duquesne Light. So for those that say, you know, complain about our rates and this, that, the other, uh, the rate table says that we're significantly lower than Duquesne Light. So they're not going to get any breaks going to another community or anyone that serves power different. Um, they did say that there's quite a lot of things happening in the next five to ten years that could affect these rates and the long-term, uh, grid infrastructure that it lack thereof really. Um, so generation isn't isn't key, but basically just some good good information that we learned uh, for a public utility that, you know, we have our own, only thirty five of us in the state have, so. Um, it's good to go and get that knowledge and, um, also participate in like, uh, the trainings that they have and everything else that are accessible to us because we're a member, so. That's all I have. Public safety, Jim?
Public safety, I'd like to make a motion to hire Dennis Rupert as a part-time police officer as per the chief's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I just want to remind people that kids that kids are in school, be careful driving out there. Uh, there's a lot of people, it seems, that aren't stopping for school buses anymore. And it seems it's dangerous out there for the kids. And we should be watching and being more careful around school districts, school area districts. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Jim. Nice to see you back too, by the way. Uh, solicitors report.
I have I have no ideas, Republican for, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Engineers report.
Yes, we already talked about a couple of things, but, uh, just to give everyone a heads up, you're going to start seeing some contractors around the borough. This this, um, this month, we have, um, three bids that we've issued those proceeds, which is the paving program, the the Britain Avenue paving and the sanitary sewer up on Highland. Um, in addition to that, and then we've talked the last couple of months about, uh, the pavement settling out on Wall Avenue. Um, trying to get the contractor out there. We talked to him again last week. And he knows what he needs to do. We met with him. He's supposed to be out there either this week or next week. Um, so hopefully that issue will will be behind us as well.
Can I stop you there? My question is with the water company, that recent break though was there. Um, they came, they fixed it, a whole big gap down in. Now, they, like I said this morning, they were out there and by the time I came back, they were gone. And they put a tory base in there, uh, stony, but it's still bushed. It's still, I think it's still going to sink. And now if you come over, Tom, to fix or whoever the contractor fix the sewer we're in, really, that that thing is still sinking. Um, just a shame that it like to do that whole area and then the water company come back. Is there a way for you to drive with them to get them to?
So where did the water company work today?
Right across, if you drive out there. Yeah, if you if you drive out there, you'll see.
They have some cones set up.
No, they took the cones away when they paid. It's a tory square.
I have drives with the water company? I I have no idea. Do you know? Do you know if they're done with doing what they're doing?
They're not.
Yeah, they're paid, they're done, you can, you know.
So so without seeing it, my guess is the the story would be a temporary and they they call it hot patch.
Yeah.
Or, you know, so it's not permanent restoration. So they normally wouldn't do restoration until they're done with what they're doing. And then they 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 put something in temporary. Now, it sunk so much that it seemed to be, we could ask them to go in.
They just did it this morning.
So to me, it sounds like probably they didn't do a very good job of the temporary.
Right.
It it's not the great, let's wait till tomorrow, a few more cars will over.
Yeah.
It's in the same area though as as as, literally.
It's on the, it's right by the sidewalk of seven fifteen. It's about a ten by fifteen patch.
So I think my I think my worry like Deb's would be is if the water company fixes it or leaves it temporary for so long and our our, the guy Curry and Kepel come in and they fix theirs, but then the water company comes in and digs up.
They did it.
So then we have a problem where they both kind of just dug up different times.
Yeah.
So maybe if we can try to get Curry and Kepel and them on the same page, then maybe they can both like, oh, well, hey, we're coming out this time. Because Mike usually can get a hold of the water company and see when they're planning on doing something with it or.
Yeah, anything we don't want Curry and Kepel to complain.
Oh.
Hey, we probably don't want to give Curry and Kepel on the next.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to say they're going to be in there this week or not, but that's just what they told us.
I think we should give them a deadline, me personally, but.
Well, we were, we had a plan, you know, which was the wait to settle.
Right.
We didn't want them to go and fix it if they were, if they were still. Now that we've, um, determined that the settlement is is done and they need to fix it.
Well, not with this new break, because now that they.
Now they've been a little bit more difficult trying to get in, but they're at the end of their construction season, so they're still trying to get things done. So whenever they come in, the project's going to do the work and try and coordinate the rest of the team with the water company.
That's going to probably settle some more because of the water company digging right next to it. And it was a big hole I was out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think if they don't, by next meeting, if they don't come out, we should be setting some sort of deadline on them. Because we're going to get to the time where months, winter months are there and they're not going to come out, so.
They're not going to make an asshole.
Then they'll be the asphalt plants are closed. So.
It'll be a two B.
At least we're clear of that. Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all I have.
All right, thanks. Borough managers report.
All right, the year-to-date compared to budget reports we submitted to council. Uh, taxes collected in August were one thousand six hundred and eighty one twenty seven. Our total year base, four hundred and fifty two thousand one hundred and twenty nine. Capital improvement account has three hundred and seventy five thousand in it. Electric capital has one hundred and fifty five seven fifty. Liquid fuels has thirty eight thousand five hundred and thirty two. Our liquid force particular deposit has fifty four thousand one hundred and thirty five. Our dairy camp run has seventy two thousand seven hundred and eighty eight. Our super capital improvement fund has nine hundred and seven four hundred and six. Public safety has eighty six thousand two hundred and twenty six. Bond repayment fund has three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ten. Park and Rec has eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy nine. The Park and Rec's profit events fund has five thousand six hundred and fifty three. Uh, Ms. Hestoff from the, uh, school district has emailed me and the Gateway school directors have invited Pinkham County the, um, to attend the homecoming football game. You'll be able to sit in the press box. I just need to know who would like to attend, if any.
What?
Uh, September twenty sixth?
I thought we were up here sitting at press box even if it was.
You are.
I think it's just, it makes that homecoming game, so it's a big game.
Absolutely. I believe it's the twenty sixth of September.
I I won't be in attendance.
Who are they playing?
I don't know.
That's what I wanted to try.
The twenty sixth is seven.
I'm going to go in for play. It's going to be a good game.
I'll tell you why. Whoever wants to go, I'm sure George knows all about it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he goes all.
But I just, I need to know so I can I can let her know.
Okay, we get back.
Yeah. In the next couple of days, please.
You're off.
I'm going to be checking my boots off. Yeah, I'm going to be off the rest of the week. And I'm still going to be checking, you know, so I'm just hanging out in the house and getting a bunch of stuff done. Hopefully. All right, and that's all I have.
Aw, be ducky. Um, Police Chief report.
I'll take the report.
All right, sounds good. Any adjournment?
Adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Deb. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.